In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A20, this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcast live on Comcast channel 12 and can also be viewed via live stream at WHCA TV. It will subsequently be broadcast on youtube.com. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Fly eyes.
The United States, America. And to the republic. For which it stands, one nation.
Undivided, invisible.
With liberty and justice for all. We'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence and of course we'll keep in our thoughts and prayers, the Floyd family in Houston. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. Is there a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants?
Don't move, Dan Selbucci.
Discussion. Okay, all is in favor of Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian? Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
Motion, Dan?
Second, Brian.
Any questions? Okay, Randy?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. First item on the agenda is the town administrator's report, an update on COVID-19. Frank?
Yes, we are continuing to move forward with plans to start engaging the public in activity. One of the big issues for the public right now is access to fields and baseball. And that's going to start happening next week and will actually start, if everything goes okay, playing games beginning of July. I have ordered a temp station for the town hall to provide us with the scanner that people can walk through coming in to determine whether or not they have elevated temperatures, which is a screening process for COVID. It should arrive according to Chief Grenow within two weeks. And at that point, I would like to look at staffing all of the offices and beginning, at least consider doing public visits by appointment, but we'll talk more about that as we get closer to it. The second item that I asked Dr. Kowalski to add to the agenda today because of COVID is our annual town meeting. On Friday, the governor signed Senate 2680, which allows communities to hold meetings outside of their geographic boundaries, which was the major obstacle to our holding a meeting at Whitman Hansen. With that legislation in place, the next question is, should we hold a meeting on June 22nd at Whitman Hansen? And that's the topic for discussion tonight. If we do not hold a meeting until July, the town will be placed on a 1/12 budget. The accountant has prepared, and I'll be reviewing it in the next day or two, a budget for July, which will include all necessary payments, debt, school assessments that normally would occur in July. So it's really more like a one-quarter budget, but it is the things that traditionally have to be paid in the first month of the fiscal year. If we do go in that direction, it will be the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to approve that 1/12 budget.
Okay, thank you, Frank. We can open it up for discussion. As someone who has by doctor's orders been housebound for a long time now, and basically I'm under house arrest, my warden, my wife is also a nurse, and she's fierce about it. I have had real concerns about being able to be at the meeting on June 22nd. I personally, for health reasons, but it's just not just myself, it's other people who are vulnerable in the town too. If we could push it off until July, it would ease my mind a little bit. If anybody wants to add to that, be my guest. And Mike, you're here to give input on this also.
Well, my thoughts were, you know, that we should be asking people to wear masks. And Frank and I have been up to the high school to look at the gymnasium and talk with Mr. Simiak about setting up the room in a way that everybody could be socially distant and that we could do this. That said, there are some people in a situation who cannot wear masks, people with health conditions. There may be people who do not want to wear masks for whatever reason. And those folks, we could have them seated in the performance art center across the hall, link the two rooms by video, have an assistant moderator in that room to recognize people who wish to speak, and vote, and do all that. It would be complicated, but it could be done if people are comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Anyone else? Justin?
I just had a few questions for probably Frank. So the reason that we wanted to try and get our town meeting together for the end of June was to avoid a 1/12 budget, but the biggest impacts were the school budget because they don't get the 1/12 plus, they just get last year's funding. And then the flood map vote that we wanted to get in before the end of the year. Now Hansen has already pushed their town meeting off, so the schools are going to 1/12 in July regardless. And the federal government allowed us to push off the flood map vote, so.
That is correct. FEMA delayed the implementation of the maps.
So is there any other really pressing issue that we want to get in before July 1st?
The only issues I see are the transfers that were necessary for the remainder of fiscal 20. Most notably, we need about $44,000 to cover the veterans' benefits, but I believe we can probably find that in other budgets through a line item transfer option.
Anyone else have thoughts?
Yeah, I have.
Dan and then Brian.
Okay, I have no issue with having it the 22nd. I look at it this way. The town, if in fact we are at the high school and there's a significant amount of space where people are separated, it's no more and no less what's happening with people walking around town now. I think a lot of budgets, I know, well, Whitman Hansen for one, but they're automatically going to go to a 1/12 because of Hansen, but Solskjaer Votec would end up going to a 1/12 if we don't get six out of eight towns. And if that's the case, and we go into July, Hansen's already put there, we'd have to get every town to agree to get a budget for Solskjaer Votec. As far as other things are concerned, I just think that it's another two weeks, is it two weeks away, two and a half weeks away? The governor is opening up certain areas. We're going to be discussing about, you know, restaurants being able to be opened, at least serving out the sidewalk. Things are moving along, and I think that if we're progressing the way we are, I have no problem with having the town meeting on the 22nd.
It's two weeks away, not two and a half weeks away. Brian?
First question is, when is Hansen's meeting?
July 20th.
20th. Okay. I really don't see reason either way. For me, if you all decide you want to go with this in June, I'm okay with that. You know, people are going to have to decide for themselves if they want to attend something like this and wear the appropriate masks and distance accordingly. But I understand their apprehension, so we might get lower turnout. And if we move into July, you know, maybe things are better. And it really doesn't matter as far as the 1/12 budgets are going. So my guess is it's really what the pleasure of the sport is. I would suggest July 27th.
Chairman?
Yes, yes, Randy?
Frank, just a quick question for you. As far as public safety goes through the 1/12, how are any unplanned events handled that budgeting wise through police and fire?
Generally, we calculate based on last July's numbers and allow for some variance for unexpected expenses, but the instructions from the DOR is to be very conservative in estimating budgets for 2021 so that we're not appropriating beyond the authority of a town meeting by over allowing funds. At the same time, any funds that are other than tax or rate pay are funded are still available, prior appropriations, revolving accounts, but not pre-cash.
So I guess my point being is just to make everyone, I'm sure a lot of people may start thinking because we're doing this, that we may be limiting services through the month of July. We would not be cutting any services if we went ahead with this.
That's correct. In fact, in July, we pay the entire year's assessment for Plymouth County, that's $2.5 million. We pay $4.7 million, $3.7 million to Whitman Hansen, and I know it's over a million to South Shore. And all those numbers are included in that first month 1/12 budget. We're not reducing any appropriations from last year. We're simply not funding whatever we would have added, and that would include salary increases.
So I would say my take on it is, I think, you know, as far as COVID goes, we've made some incredible progress in the last couple of weeks and in the next two weeks. And I think if this level of progress continues, we may see a better turnout in July, which I think is the ultimate goal of having the most people there possible. And I would hate to see people not come to town meeting because, one, for health reasons they couldn't, or just the fear of possibly getting this. So again, if the date Brian put out, or any other date that may be in mind, I would be open to.
Okay, we actually don't have a motion on the floor unless Brian wants to make the July 27th data.
And the motion, the motion should be in the form to request that the town moderator consider postponing town meeting. I think it would have to be an open postponement because the statute only allows 30 days. But to ask the town moderator, in consideration of health and safety, to postpone the town meeting for 30 days, and then we can meet again within that 30-day window to set a date if there wishes to delay it to the end of July.
What he said.
What he said. Does someone want a second? Does someone want a second? What he said and Brian echoed?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Randy.
I still have a question, Dan, actually. I don't want to put Solskjaer Votec in a pickle. And, you know, we already have Whitman Hansen in a pickle. But in the past, how have the votes been for the towns on Solskjaer Votec's budget? Has it been unanimous, or have there been?
Yeah, it's been 8-0. So if there are six towns that are having their town meeting prior to July and it's voted, that means we're obligated to pay that amount, or we know what we can. But if in fact, we don't have the votes because of delay of town meeting, Tom, our superintendent, says that he's got it covered financially.
Yeah, and actually, I did try to reach out to South Shore today, but I was unsuccessful reaching anyone.
Yeah, but he said if it comes to that, he's got it covered. Just one question. When is Hansen having this?
July 20th.
July 20.
Why wouldn't we have it the same as theirs?
They may need to be in the same building.
We may, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay.
And Hansen delayed theirs by judgment of the court. They went to court for an extension in their meeting, so they're not subject to that 30-day limitation.
Okay.
So in that motion that I echoed from Frank, I also would add a suggestion of July 27th, but I know that we can't with the 30 days. So I would say, I would hope that we could go a little longer, but.
Yeah, I think the 27th makes sense when it comes to me. If this motion is successful, that would be a good date to keep in mind before the 30 days is up. Anyone else have anything they want to chime in?
Just.
Yes, Justin?
That, yeah, I think this is a good idea. Town meeting falls more in line with phase three type scenarios following the governor's reopening guidelines. Phase two would be pushing it for an indoor gathering of 50 to, you know, at least 50 people. That's our quorum.
Right?
Right.
Anyone else? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. We'll go around the board. Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also.
And now a question to Mr. Moderator. Are you amenable to postponing town meeting as discussed?
I am.
I will have, I'll have that drafted for you tomorrow by council.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Before we go on to the budget review, I would like to read a letter that I received to the honorable board members. On June 8th, on behalf of the Whitman business community, I would like to take this opportunity to commend and thank Police Chief Tim Hanlon, Deputy Chief Joe Bombardier, Fire Chief Tim Grenow, and Town Administrator Frank Linham for their work on this past Sunday's peaceful protest and vigil. We would also like to thank the organizers, Shannon Murphy and Morgan Karims, and of course, the participants for making this event safe and positive, and certainly all of the local police. As you know, there was a lot of angst in the community when it was announced that this event was going to be Friday evening. That angst was because of what had transpired in Brockton, Boston, and many other communities when the protests turned violent when held at night. We believe that the violence was not caused by the protesters, but by others. Many of our local businesses still have not reopened due to the COVID-19 pandemic and face many challenges in coming days, weeks, and months to stay viable. There was much relief when the event was changed to Sunday afternoon. Again, we would like to thank the organizers for the change in dates and for organizing the event. We, as a business community, stand with peaceful protest and vigils. Of course, we would also like to thank all of the participants who attended. Events like this make small towns such as Whitman the absolute best place in the world to live when a community comes together, as it did Sunday, for such a great purpose. And as signed, sincerely, Richard Rosen.
Oh, nice.
And budget review, Frank?
The finance committee is meeting tonight. The warrant was finalized last week. Of course, we now have more time for people to familiarize themselves with it. And the finance committee is going to begin an analysis of Article 2. I would expect to have their recommendations, hopefully, if not this week, next week. And then we'll update the information that's presented to the public for that meeting, so they will be fully apprised of what's being asked for at town meeting.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, new business. Act on the application of Old Colony Brewing Incorporated for a common vitler's license on the premises located at 605 Bedford Street, Unit 1, subject to receipt of the license fee. Is there a motion?
It's all moved, Dan.
I did. Is there a second?
Second, Brian.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
And Mr. Nash is present for this meeting, and I believe that he's been provided with the myriad requirements that are necessary to serve at a table. It's everything but having to balance on one foot, I believe.
That's correct.
And he's certainly interested in offering that to see if he can serve his public that way.
Okay, we actually have another, we have another motion here to deal with Old Colony Brewing. Would you like to make any comments now, Dennis, or?
Yeah, I would just like to, thanks. Thank you for letting me talk to you guys about this. So yeah, a few things that I wanted to bring up was, you know, one of the things we wanted to do is we got permission from Mr. Rosen to use three spaces on the side of the building for outdoor seating, if approved by the committee. And what we'd be able to do is, you know, following all the rules and regulations that Governor Baker put out there around, you know, six feet between each patron, maximum number of people. You know, I sent a list of the safety protocols that we would put in place to open, you know, with a maximum of 24 people there, probably more likely 16 at a time, with reservations, you know, and 45-minute intervals. So we would have people come in at a, you know, a 45, you know, come in, let's say, a noon reservation, be there for 45 minutes, leave 15 minutes to clean everything down again, and let the next group come in at a 1 o'clock reservation. And so we put together all of these different things based on the recommendations from Governor Baker, and also talking to Alexis of the Board of Health around different things to make sure that we had everything covered, and we checked all the boxes for what we need to do and what we can do, you know, to serve our customers, you know, outside.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone have any questions of Dennis?
I just want to note that in order to offer outside service, he must also offer food. And that's the reason for the application for the common vitler license to accommodate that.
Yeah, and I also just, I filled out a form for Alexis Andrews for the food license too, and I worked with her on making sure anything we served, you know, that would have to be, you know, prepackaged, prepared food that we would offer to our patrons, you know, if they so wanted to buy something.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else?
Yeah, Kyle, I have, if we make this motion, would it be contended on final approval or inspection by our Board of Health and the building inspector to make sure that everything is, all the accommodations are completed?
That's the requirement anytime we engage in a license on this venue.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, well, we'll do the vote. Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And then the next one deals with Old Colony Brewing too. Act on the request of the Old Colony Brewing Incorporated to alter the description of the license premises located at 605 Bedford Street, Unit 1, to expand for outdoor seating pursuant to Governor Baker's June 1st, 2020 order, subject to the final inspection and approval of the liquor license inspection agent. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Brian.
Anyone have any questions on this? Dennis has kind of covered that and is talking. Okay, we're ready for, we're ready to vote. Randy?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Dennis, lots of luck.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome.
Bye. Take care.
Next item on the agenda is to discuss the suggestion of Ralph Sacramone, Executive Director of the ABCC, to authorize the town administrator to approve applications from Section 12 licenses, requesting to expand for outdoor seating pursuant to Governor Baker's June 1st, 2020 order, subject to the final inspection approval of the Board of Health and Chief of Police. Is there a motion?
I'll make that move, Dan.
Is there a second?
Second, Brian.
Frank, do you want to say anything about this?
Yeah, the intent in that is to allow a quick response to people requesting to do that where boards may be meeting infrequently.
Anyone want to have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, Justin.
Off the top of my mind, I think Old Colony Brewing was one of the only establishments in town that didn't also serve food. That would apply for this kind of a license. Is there?
You must serve food. You must serve. You have to serve prepared on the premises. It can't be, it can't be a snack truck driving in.
Okay. So any establishment that needed to also add food would have to apply for another license?
If they don't have one, yeah.
If they didn't have it already. Okay.
Also, Frank, I have a question on that. If we allow them to be on the sidewalks, do they have to, do we relax the handicap accessible laws?
No.
Sidewalk?
No. ADA is a federal law. There has to be sufficient room for the public to travel, and most of these are not going to be sidewalk. They're going to be parking lot or side aisle type locations. I could see one outfit in, on Washington Street, perhaps looking to set up a sidewalk service, but they have not expressed any interest in it.
Well, we'll see how it goes.
Do I just see your hand, Randy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to go in line with this, something I've been thinking about. I mean, obviously, we know that we've had a lot of our restaurants that have been severely affected by this. I don't know if we could have possibly Lisa look into this, talk to the business owners in the center, but maybe do something where we actually close the center down and let these restaurants expand that outdoor seating a little bit, still staying within the rules of COVID-19. If it was just one day a week to get these places back on a paying basis, I mean, right in the center, I can think of, you know, four or five restaurants possibly that could open up. And if we could do it maybe with the help of, you know, just reaching out and trying to get some type of plan together, but, you know, working around the restrictions that were under the pandemic and see if there's anything we can do that
Not a bad idea.
that these places are able to do a little bit more than just two or three tables on the sidewalk, even if it's only maybe a day a week.
Brian?
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Randy, you hit home run on that one.
I've had some discussions with Brett Small, I'm sure you might have as well, because he came up with this, an idea like this a while back when we were talking about how we could help businesses. And, you know, this could turn into something very positive and maybe keep going, even after everything has kind of gone back to whatever normal will be. But this could really maybe change the downtown area for the positive, and maybe on a Saturday night, it'll be a place to gather and really change the downtown, which on a Saturday night sometimes is pretty slow. So I'm all for this, and I think we should pursue it. So I'm all for this, and I think we should pursue it.
Okay, that's.
My name is Mr. Chairman. It has been on the news that some other towns have done that. They've closed off sections of busy streets with their many establishments, and it's worked out very well.
So let's get that ball rolling, and Lisa, that sounds like a good thing for you to get into, with Frank's advice and help, of course.
Sure.
Lisa, we'll do fine.
I know, I know you will. Okay, thank you, Randy. That was good. Have we voted this? Have we voted this yet?
No. I'll make the motion.
We did. I think we already did that.
Yeah, I'm talking about the suggestion of Ralph Sacramone.
Yeah.
Okay, we have made a motion. Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And we'll be looking forward to hearing more from Lisa on Randy's suggestion. Make the fiscal year 21 annual appointments. Is there a motion to make those appointments?
I'll make that motion. Are you going to list them off, Kyle?
No, I'm not.
I'll second that.
Okay. Let's have a vote then. Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian? Brian?
Yes.
Anytime. Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, too. And this is one occasion when my house bond sentence has given me a break, because it means.
Well, maybe we'll deliver them.
No, they can still be contaminated, Dan. It's fine. Probably three or four signatures on those little tiny little cards will be enough.
Good answer, good answer.
Yeah. Act on the request of Chief Grenow for a line item transfer in the amount of $10,000 from line number 133, all of the services, the line item 140, ambulance billing. Is there a motion?
So moved, Dan?
Second, Brian.
Any questions? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
No, and I'll vote yes. Act on the request of the town administrator to transfer $2,993.49 from line item 2006B, animal control expense, to line item 206A, animal control salaries. Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Brian's second.
Okay. Any discussion? Because someone put that memo up there, I have no idea if anybody has their hand raised.
I have to look at the side of your screen. I see no hands up.
All right, get that memo out of there. Okay, Justin?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. We've already set June meetings, and we have a meeting set for the 22nd. We should just keep that date for our last June meeting, or do you want to move it to the 23rd, which is our normal date of Tuesday? What's the pleasure of the board?
We also have a meeting set for the 30th.
So do we need the meeting on the 22nd?
We could probably get away with just the 23rd if we wanted to scrap the 30th and the 22nd.
I would say so, unless we have transfers that have to be acted on. So what do we want to do?
I don't know.
Let's say, hold the 23rd. There may be a necessity. Well, no, at that point, we'd be able to vote. We still have that 30-day issue. We may have to meet on the 30th.
So maybe we don't need to meet on the 23rd. That was just going to be a short meeting before the town meeting anyway.
Right.
So why don't we meet on the 30th, and at that time, we can take care of that other little issue with the naming the 27th?
Sounds good.
That makes sense. Okay, but if we need a meeting in between, Frank, let us know, and we can arrange one of these little get-togethers. Okay, so the next meeting will be, the next official meeting right now will be June 30th.
Yeah, okay.
Right, 30th.
Yep.
We need to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and Exception 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Brian, yes.
Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We'll be in executive session, and we'll need to sign out of this meeting, correct, Frank? And then we'll come.
That's correct. We'll be launching a separate meeting for exec.
And actually, will we be adjourning out of that exec? We're not coming into open session again to adjourn, are we?
We will not. We may take votes at the executive session. If those votes are taken, they will be incorporated in the minutes and published.
Okay. Okay, so see you in a couple of minutes, guys, in executive, and we won't be coming back in open session. Actually, let's make it really official. We'll motion to, I'd like a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, and in a few minutes, we'll be in executive session.
Okay.